We are working on Bill 69, and I understand that we've put Bill 69 back into the voting file. And so at this time, I will entertain Senator Respechial, Majority Leader. You're recognized. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Without any objections, motion carries. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, we do have filed committee report for substitute bill number 20-32, and it's an act to establish a health care trust and development fund by adding a new chapter 97 to Title 10 GCA and authorizing the expenditure of monies in the fund for the specific purpose of paying the outstanding debt payables of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority and establishing a fund, a funding a Guam GMHA patient urgent health care center for non-emergency patients. And this act to be cited as the GMHA Health Care Trust Act, Trust and Development Act of 2013. And this version is substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens. I move that that be placed in the second reading file.
Are there any objections? There's an objection on the floor, but if I can just, I'm going to go ahead and take a 30-second recess. I just need the bill to be in front of me. There's been an objection to that bill. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of putting it onto the second reading agenda, please signify by raising your hand. Bill number 20. One, two, three. One, two, four, five, six, seven. Motion carries.
Madam Speaker, we also have a filed committee report on my bill 48-32, as substituted by the author, and it's an act to define the educational and professional requirements for licensed professionals, counselors, licensed mental health counselors, and marriage and family therapists. And I move that this will also be placed in the second reading file.
Are there any objections?
Forty-eight copies have been made and distributed.
Okay. If everybody has a copy of that, clerk, just make sure I have a copy up here. I see it. Okay. Without any objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I also have with me a memorandum that's addressed to yourself from Speaker Judith T. Wanpad, and it's a request to waive public hearing for bills numbers 121-32, 122-32, 123-32, 124-32, 125-32, 127-32. And Madam Speaker writes that the subject matter contained in all of these bills were publicly heard as items contained in bill number 95-32COR during a hearing conducted on May 14, 2013 by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Works, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and the Land Committee. And a record of this public hearing proceedings is provided, as well as uploaded on the website. So I leave it at this time for you to provide the disposition of the chair relative to this request.
On that motion, I, yes, Mr. Speaker?
Madam Speaker, the Committee on Appropriations, as correctly stated, held a hearing on Bill 95, which was a bill that included all of the appropriations contained in the bill that's being attempted to be placed on the reading agenda without a committee report. Because of the fact that the Bill 95 was out of order when introduced, containing multiple appropriations, the Committee on Appropriations then submitted a bill to the legislature and to the Committee on Rules, which was reported out, Bill 95, which contained one of the appropriations. But the committee report of Bill 95 contains all of the discussions referencing all of the appropriations contained in those various bills. So I would just say, rather than waive the committee report, I would make a motion to append committee report number 95 to each of these bills, because it is the subject, as they said, of that public hearing, and therefore, the body can have a record of the discussion of what occurred with regards to those appropriation matters. And so rather than waiving the public hearing, because we've had one, we just amend and append committee report Bill 95 on each of those bills, and they will serve as the committee report on that. And I think that would be a more appropriate action by this body, because it would include, once again, the record of the discussion, and the body can have the benefit of the record of that discussion in each of those bills.
Speaker, I will take that matter into consideration. I will consult with legal counsel. I'll have a legislative recess, so we'll be in recess. Based on the consideration that was presented to us, I moved that the public hearing be waived, but that the committee report from bill number five, based on the consideration of Speaker Ben Pangolino, be appended to each of the bills. So, motion stands. At that time, on the motion to place the bills on the session agenda, are there any objections? Are there any objections? No objections, motion stands. Senator Respechial, you're still recognized. All bills, if everybody, does everybody have a copy of all six bills? So, for, just for the record, bill numbers 121-32LS, 122-32LS, 123-32LS, 124-32LS, 125-32LS, and 127-32LS are now on the legislative session agenda. Majority Leader Respechial, you're still recognized.
Madam Speaker, I have another bill, only because we've been made aware of this bill, 89-32, sponsored by Senator Michael Nicholas, and it's an act to add a new Article 17 to Chapter 22, Title V GCA, relative to the Responsible Reserve Fund. I move that this be placed in the second reading file.
Where's a copy of your bill? I don't even know what the title is.
On that motion, Senator Nicholas, do you have a copy of that bill? Can I have a copy of that bill?
I do.
We'll go ahead and take a legislative minute recess. This legislature is back in session. I understand, my colleagues, you have number 89, bill number 89, with you. On the motion to place number 89, bill number 89, on the session agenda, are there any objections? There being no objections, motion carries. Senator Respechial, you're still recognized.
Madam Speaker, I have one more motion, and a committee report is being circulated. It's bill number 19-32, as substituted by the author, and this is an act to add new subsection 5201 to 205 to 11 GCA Chapter 5, relative to gaming. And I move that that be placed on the second reading file.
On the motion to put bill number 19 on the agenda, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, colleagues. I have no more motions at this time. So notwithstanding, so we can go back to the second reading.
Right. We're back, ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the second reading right now, and on top of the agenda is bill number 20. No?
Yes.
Yes?
No, I didn't make the motion.
No. It was, it was based on the motions that came in?
It's the miracle, yeah. So I think that's the next thing that we have to address, unless there's nothing else on the second reading.
There's nothing else on this.
Senator Park.
No, 90.
She's going to pass that.
Senator, I mean, Speaker Judith Wanpad, I'm sorry, after taking a closer look at the agenda, we still have the bill that's in the second reading. It's bill number 95. 95 as COR?
Well, the amendment earlier, when we started session, is that when the author is ready to bring a bill forward, then that's when the bill would come forward, and I'm still keeping it and setting it aside.
Motion to set aside, without any objections, motion carries. Now, based on the motions that were placed before us, the first number up on the agenda is bill number 20, as substituted. Senator Respechial, you're recognized. I mean, I'm sorry, Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized. My apologies.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place bill 20-32, as amended by the author and as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, on the third reading, and be allowed to discuss it.
I rise in objection.
There's been an objection on the floor to move it to the third reading for discussions. All those in favor wanting to see the bill 20 placed on third reading and to speak, signify by raising your hand, please. That motion has failed.
Madam Speaker, I move to reconsider the actions of the body on that motion that just failed.
Objection.
There was a move to reconsider. There's an objection on the floor. All those wishing to move for the reconsideration, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm going to try this again. Move to place bill 20-32, as amended by the author and as substituted by the committee on the third reading, and be allowed to discuss the bill.
And I rise to again renew my objection.
On the motion to place it on the third reading for discussion, there's an objection.
Actually, point of order, Madam Speaker, procedurally, isn't it that when the sponsor makes a motion to place a bill in the third reading file, then he would speak on the bill, and then there's an objection? So there's an objection now. So basically, what you're doing when you're asked for a call for vote, you're actually limiting discussion on the actual motion. And his motion is to place this bill on the third reading file, and we're supposed to be a deliberative body to discuss that motion. And so when someone stands up and objects, and you call for the vote, you're preventing me, as a member of this legislature, to stand up and say whether or not I support that particular bill. So if it's the will of the body to suppress discussion, then call for the vote again. But that's essentially what you're doing, and that's essentially what the motion, objecting to that motion, is doing.
Just earlier this week, Madam Speaker, I was up there chairing, and there was going to be an objection to the introduction of a bill. And when I asked if there was an objection to it going into third reading, it all of a sudden was quiet. But then when that, when a movement tried to bring it back up and say to substitute it completely, it was ruled out of order. So when are we supposed to be able to get up and say it shouldn't go down for discussion today? I think it's now. We can't change the rules the same week.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
State your point of order.
The vice speaker is absolutely correct to state the objection now, but I'm just saying that if you're going to vote on the objection, essentially, we're not given the opportunity to discuss whether or not that bill should go in the voting file. So if you want to call for the vote, call for the vote. But I'm saying essentially, that's what that objection is at this point in this discussion process.
Based on the legal advice of counsel, there has, there has been a motion to speak on bill 20 in third reading. I will allow the, I will, I respect the objection being on the, that has been noted, but I will allow the colleagues on the floor to speak on that. Senator Rodriguez, you have the floor. You may speak on the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much to my colleagues. Madam Speaker and colleagues, bill 20-32 was introduced earlier this year in January, and bill 20, Madam Speaker, has gone through, has gone through a lot. What this bill is about, it's about helping our What this bill is about, it's about helping our ailing hospital, Madam Speaker, the only hospital that we have. The initial bill, the initial bill, Madam Speaker, proposed to assess a 4% fee on all health insurance premiums that are paid on Guam. Proceeds from that assessment, Madam Speaker, would go to the hospital to help the hospital retire its $23 million debt, a debt, Madam Speaker, that they have to vendors, our local vendors, to local doctors, the people who supply our hospital, the medicines and the supplies we need to take care of us, take care of our families. Since introducing this bill, Madam Speaker, we've had a lot of, a lot of pushback, especially from the insurance industry. And you know, it wasn't easy for me to put this bill together and say, you know what we're going to do? We're going to, we're going to put on an additional fee on health insurance premiums. I did it, Madam Speaker, knowing full well that the health insurance industry on Guam received qualifying certificates, tax breaks, generous tax breaks, that us, the people of Guam subsidize. We subsidize them. And we know now from history, Madam Speaker, that these insurance companies, these domestic insurance companies, it was never meant for them to take advantage of this qualifying certificate program. We've heard Greta on the record speak and talk about how this QC was intended for captive insurers, not for the domestic health insurance companies. We know now that this is a $200 million industry, just the health insurance alone, that is paid every year by our people, paid in health insurance premiums. And, Madam Speaker, they have 100% abatement on GRT, they have abatements on their corporate dividends, all at the expense of the people of Guam. And when I said we're going to propose to assess this on them and ask them, come to the table and help us, help our hospital now, because for many years, the people of Guam have been helping you, they came back and said, no. You know what we're, you know what we're going to do, Madam Speaker? You know what they said? We're going to sock it to the loyal customers that allow them to make these profits throughout the years. And then we see a report that says, if we pass this 4% assessment, it's going to be the people who's going to have to pay for it. I say that report was very helpful, because you know what it did, Madam Speaker? It helped us see that, yes, $9 million, that's how much we subsidize these people in GRT So, Madam Speaker, we listen, we listen. I listened to the industry, listened to the, to the arguments that were presented during the public hearing, but I didn't allow Bill 20 to die. Because Bill 20, the intent, Madam Speaker, is to ensure we have revenues coming to our only hospital. We've heard the hospital officials, representatives, come and tell us what kind of dire situation they're in. And it didn't happen overnight, Madam Speaker. This problem that a hospital faces has been there. And I've never said that Bill 20 is the fix-all. It's not the silver bullet, but it's a start, Madam Speaker. The debt that we have to our vendors and our doctors, Madam Speaker, we've heard that this is the most serious threat to our hospital, to the health and well-being of our people. Nine months ago, my wife and I gave birth to our son. We were in that delivery room. Before going into the hospital, my wife said, this is our third child. She said she's going to try to do it all natural, no, no painkillers. But of course, you know what mothers go through. I will never know, but I can just see. And at that point, she said, you know, she needed that, that pain medication. So she asked her doctor, doc, it's time, you know, I know we've said no, you know, we're going to do it natural, but it's time. We need, we need that medication. We need the pain medication. Doctor said, okay, fine. But let me tell you that this medication that I'm going to provide to you now, the risk is, if you give birth within one hour of taking this medication, the risk is that your child will be born depressed. I said, Madam Speaker, I told the doctor, what in the world, you're going to tell us that this medication, this is the medication you're giving here, is that the risk is that our child will be born depressed? Why? The doctor said, well, you know, it's, you know, he said, of course, you know, this is a safe medication, but that's the risk, I have to tell you. Because the medication that we would give you, I believe was called Stadol. The hospital didn't have it at that time. They didn't have it, Madam Speaker, because the vendor that provides the hospital these medications stopped providing the hospital services because of non-payment. So you know what the hospital has to do in cases like this? They go to their second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth tier, six-tier suppliers. So they would have to resort to a secondary type of drug. Not only that, Madam Speaker, the cost. I've always used the example that if you buy a 25-cent Tylenol from one vendor, this may not be the cost, but I'm just making the example, from a first-tier vendor at the hospital that sells them 25 cents for a medication, because that vendor stopped providing the hospital that medication of non-payment, the hospital would have to go to the third, fourth, all the way up until someone would provide it. But you know what? That 25-cent medication, we're buying it today for $3, $4. That's the situation a hospital is in. And you know, Madam Speaker, since January, when we introduced this, this bill, this is the bill that's on the table right now to help the hospital. Yes, I acknowledge our good senator, our Majority Leader, has introduced other measures that would help the hospital, and we will get to those bills. But right now, Madam Speaker, this would help the hospital right now on what they The original version, Madam Speaker, had much more to it. Said that before you take advantage of this revenue stream, you must have all these management and management reforms done at the hospital before you can, before you could take advantage of these funds. We've had it in the language that before you can even touch it, you must come back to the legislature for us to approve it. But we were told that that may be inorganic, so we removed it. We know that there's forward progress happening in our hospital today, Madam Speaker. Things are improving, but they're not out of the woods, and they need the help. In order to get to that place where we want to be in our hospital, Madam Speaker, we need, we need this. The hospital needs this. And so when, Madam Speaker, the threat was out there to our people that you passed Bill 20 with that 4%, we're going to pass it on to our, our customers, we said, okay, we're going to regroup and see how we can get real new revenue to the hospital. Instead of saying, okay, we're going to cut our existing budgets from DOE, cut existing budgets from the police department to bring to the hospital, because at least for me, that's a very important issue. The hospital is important. The health care of our people are important. We didn't do that because I know that DOE, the education, public safety is just as important. A few days ago, we were talking, we were here talking about a bill that would take funds from unclaimed checks, the street funds, and use it for Guam housing. But we were told, be careful, because there's so many other obligations this government needs to make, and it's coming up. Madam Speaker, so when we heard that the government in April, Department of Revenue and Taxation, once again issued licenses for these gaming devices, we saw, I saw that One month has passed that these gaming devices are back on the streets in operation. We're saying, instead of that money now going to the general fund to fund everything else, we're going to direct it to the hospital. New revenue, Madam Speaker, because for five years, these machines were subject of legal disputes in court. And prior to revenue tax issuing these licenses, Madam Speaker, the case was dismissed, was dismissed by our government, by the Attorney General's office. These machines, Madam Speaker, have licenses. So to say that they are illegal is an insult.
Point of information, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think that the author has certainly appreciate what he's saying, but he's speaking on behalf of the Attorney General, and we have the Attorney General here. And so I would think that rather than the author speaking on behalf of the Attorney General with regards to the status of these machines, that the Attorney General be allowed to come into the session hall, and we resolve into the committee as a whole, and we can have the discussion on that matter. And I just don't think it's fair to speak on behalf of the Attorney General and express his opinion with regards to the legality of these machines and their current status.
Madam Speaker, the Attorney General had the opportunity. We had a public hearing yesterday on this bill. And so I'm not speaking on behalf of the Attorney General. I'm speaking on facts.
I, Mr. Speaker, I will allow the, the speaker who's speaking right now to finish his presentation. Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so, Madam Speaker, when we found out that these machines are back on, they have a duly issued government license to operate, we said, these are revenues we're going to go after, because we know the potential that these gaming devices can generate for Ireland. They've been in operation since 1998 or 1999. So to say today that these devices are illegal out there now is an insult. It's an insult to the legislative process. It's also an insult to the business people who operate these machines. So, Madam Speaker, I think the discussions have, you know, we've put Bill 20 out, the discussions have been had, Madam Speaker. And today is the time to, to decide whether we're going to help the hospital this way, or we're going to tell the vendors, tell the hospital that they're going to have to wait some more. The experience I had, my wife and I had nine months ago, Madam Speaker, others have shared similar experiences. We can't say health care is one of our priorities, Madam Speaker, if we don't put solutions on the table. So, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to finally bring this bill to the floor, to discuss it, and to have our colleagues, have the opportunity for our colleagues to decide whether they would support this or not. I just must say, Madam Speaker, that for those that are still out there thinking, well, they can't support it right now, what are the other options? So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues, our colleagues, for their positive consideration on Bill 20. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. I have Vice Speaker B.J., who also will speak on the bill. Is there any other colleagues who want to speak on Bill 20? If not, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I thought we were just trying to discuss on whether or not it should be discussed today, because I really don't think the time is right. I'm not going to speak to the issue of the gambling. I'm just talking about whether or not this is the time to do it. There is no question that I believe that the hospital needs assistance. I'm not sure they're helping themselves. You were all there yesterday when I asked the...
Vice Speaker, if I may?
Yes.
Based on the decision and legal advice that was given to me, I will, I said that I will allow the author of the legislation to speak, and anyone else who wished to speak on the bill. There was an objection on the floor to place it on the voting file on the third reading. And usually, we allow people to speak, and when it comes to taking the vote to go to the third reading, I've accepted the objection, then we'll call for the vote. So there's a motion? No, but I have allowed the people, I have allowed anyone who else who wished to speak on it. So if no one else wishes to speak on the floor, if there's the objection to place it on the third reading for voting, then I will entertain it then.
All right. The retiring, the retiring speaker asked, what other ideas do you have? All right. Madam Speaker, I am willing to bend over backwards. I have attended board of trustee meetings at the, at the hospital to find out what they needed. I have tried to find in the last budget bill some money for them to get computers, because they spent three and a half million dollars on software but didn't get the hardware. There is no question that I have been trying my hardest to try to help them. I foiaed the list of contractors on Ireland that owed them money. Last year, it was almost a million dollars. This year, it's a half a mil. But yesterday, he had no report as to whether or not they've collected on that half mil. I sent him a letter about a month and a half ago and asked, and reminded him that there's a law that this, that they're supposed to, to get the, the contractors to pay for the bills that they run up for their H2 workers. When I initially asked him about it in a, in a letter, he didn't realize that there was a law. Then yesterday, I said, I'm not, I'm only going to ask you about what you've done since you've been there. Since you've been there, Mr. Verga, in September, there, there was only one vacancy in the collections office. After the, after the, the beginning of the fiscal year, October, November, December, January, February, March, six months, there were four vacancies in that office, four vacancies, including two collectors, account technician one and account technician two. He had the nerve to look at me and say, well, those were unfunded positions. Now, I know when we create autonomous agencies, we didn't expect them to be optimists. But I was going to use that yesterday on him, but it would have been lost in the translation. But I finally called him out on it. I said, unless you're doing things different from the rest of us in government, when we budget, we fund the positions with live persons on that are on there, and we defund or positions that are vacant. The one position that was filled this last March, I mean, this last April, was the one position number that was unfunded in the last pre-fiscal year, which one would have thought should have been the one that was unfunded in the, in the new budget. So I asked the chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to allow this man to just, just because he has the title of general manager, or whatever it is, CEO of the hospital, to have the public out there believe that I was wrong, that he should have filled those And I want a board resolution to show me that those positions were unfunded. And I want a board resolution to show me that those positions were unfunded. And he, to his credit at least, he asked to come back on and admit that he was wrong, that the position was funded, the positions were funded, and that he just hasn't filled them in the last seven months. Here, we're falling all over ourselves to try to help them gain money, get money, when they won't help themselves fill their staff of collectors, collection agents, account technicians to get the billings out. It's like me complaining to my doctor, my blood pressure hasn't gone down, doc. I'm taking my medication, I'm going to the gym, and she looks at me and she goes, I see you at the gym, but you won't get on any of the aerobic machines. It's nice that you're lifting, but if you don't get on the aerobic machines, the, going to Heavenly Veggies three or four times a week and, and working out isn't going to do it. You have to do some aerobic exercise. Well, the hospital needs to do something. And I only raised the question of things that happened during the period that he was there. I did not even bring up the fiasco of the RFP that was issued in 2011 for a collection agent. And the RFP was rebid at twice, because the person that won the bid was politically incorrect to this administration. So because they didn't like the person that was going to do the collection, they refused to have the collection agency be awarded the contract. That's as stupid as me going to the hospital and saying, I don't want you to do my transfusion or to do, do, take care of me, because you're ugly, or you're fat, or whatever. I don't get to choose who the doctor, I want that cute doctor down there to take care of me, not you. The hospital isn't doing anything to, to help itself. He smiled. I raised $100,000 in the last six weeks with one of the questions that was raised. What happened to the half million from the contractors? They're not helping themselves, and I don't see why we have to fall all over ourselves to put this on the bill today, on the floor today. And since it's decided that we can speak on the entire bill, I'll speak about the source. All of you know how I feel about gambling on this, on this island. I remember distinctly 25 years ago, when to show us support to get Senator Areola's bill through the legislature, I came in a robe, and the Archbishop came in full regalia with a miter to the hearing at the old legislative hall to fight gambling. I handled juvenile and family court for 10 years, Madam Speaker, and the things that I saw in there would curl your hair. But I would just leave one image in your mind that has burned on mine for the last 25 years, and is the reason why every chance I get, I will rail against gambling on this island. Yes, I handled literally hundreds over those 10 years, literally hundreds, if not thousands, of abandoned kids that were sitting outside of, of the gambling, the poker palaces that we had at that time. But Madam Speaker, I will tell you the one incident that has made me this rabid, crazy person fighting against gambling. We were dealing with a truancy case, a 12-year-old girl. I thought, truancy? Why are you skipping school, young lady? I have to stay home. Why do you have to stay home? Because my mother and daddy aren't there. Where are they? They're at the poker palaces. How often are they gone? Sometimes they're gone for days, Judge. How do you survive? And the response haunts me to this day. I provide sexual favors to the men in the village, and they give me enough money to buy bread, a loaf of bread and a can of Spam to feed my brothers and sisters. That answer, Madam Speaker, has haunted me for the last 25 years, and until the day I die, I will stand up every time and fight gambling. I was even willing, I gave up my position on the Olympic Committee, you know that. I had a cherry position. I was traveling to all the Olympic Games and having free room and board, attending every single game. I could walk into the, all the basketball games that I wanted to watch, all the volleyball games, whatever. I didn't have to pay a cent. But philosophically, I could not continue to go into the market, see a woman with four children with $10 in her hand, go pay $6 for a lottery ticket, then go and try to find a package of hamburger for $4 for the difference. The end that we're trying to get to is magnanimous. But the means are wrong. You and I were at a dinner for, well, I won't say which country it was. It was a group of top executives from travel industry. And you know as well as I do that they were discussing earlier before we got there, the way they thought that we should, we can and should improve tourism on this island. And you know that the suggestion that was given to them, or at least one of the suggestions that was offered by one of our RGVB members, well, what seems to be the problem? Well, you have no nightlife. Well, how about if we have a big karaoke building with private rooms? Okay. How about the girls? No, you can't, you have to do whatever you're going to do with them there. You can't take them out. And you know what the response was when they headed that delegation? And that's no good. In order to support and increase tourism here, we want to become Subic Bay? I'm sorry, no. It's enough that many of our young girls are working, quote unquote, working girls down there, because they can make more than we are making here in this legislature, if But to the magnanimous end of improving tourism and improving our economy, we're going to promote prostitution? There are other ways of dealing with this. There are other sources of funds that, that could be out of revenue tax. Two weeks ago, I foiaed revenue tax. I wanted to know how many companies on this island have wholesale licenses. And I wanted a, an accounting of it for the last five years, 2009, 10, 11, 12, and this year. Well, I only got a few years. I got 2009. In 2009, there were 899,000 companies, 899 wholesale companies, including restaurants, You'd be shocked to see who are on that list. In 2009, we exempted a total of $779,696,852,000. If we had collected grocery receipts in 2009 for that without the exemption, we would have realized $31,187,874. In 2010, the number of companies that got wholesale licenses went up to 911. And when you have a chance to look at the list, you'd be surprised to see who was added in 2010. In 2010, the total exempted revenue was $876,36,583. We lost grocery receipts there of $35,41,463. In 2011, for the last year that they were able to provide me with a list, the number went down to 901 companies, but the amount of money that was exempted went up, $967,744,337, resulting in a loss of GRT to us from the exemption of $38,709,773. Just for those three years, we exempted $101,939,110. If you want to know a source, there is a source. I'm not suggesting that we completely abolish the exemption. One or 2%? All you have to do is divide that number by either one or by four, and for every percent that we lose, we, we give up, we gain. The amount that would be realized with just a 1% change in the grocery receipts would be more than, more than what would be realized in this bill. If you're looking for a place, there's a place to start. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Vice Speaker. Next on the agenda is Senator Mike Snicholas.
Madam Speaker, I ask that the body allow the Attorney General to come in to address the body on the issue of the legality of these machines?
At this time, I will, like I said earlier, I will entertain those who wanted to speak first before I entertain that motion. So I will have Senator Mike Snicholas speak. Thank you, Speaker.
Madam Speaker, roughly two months ago, we had a hearing with the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. And in that hearing, I asked two very specific questions. My first question, which I asked of the general manager, was, based on your cost-cutting and revenue generating estimates that you have currently ongoing, at what point do you think you're going to reach maximum efficiency? And when you hit that point, how much more money do you think you're going to need to continue operating in the current environment? That was two months ago. I didn't get a response. I sent the same question as an email to their chief financial officer, and he emailed me back saying, well, that's a hard thing to do. I raised the same question in our hearing yesterday with regards to this bill, and the general manager said, well, that's something that's constantly ongoing. And, Madam Speaker, I made it very clear to the general manager that if we're going to be raising any kind of fees or taxes, we need to understand exactly how much is needed. Why are we going to be creating a tax or raising a fee when we don't have a firm handle on how much exactly we're going to be short in the current environment? And then I told the general manager, I said, in the private sector, in any turnaround situation, when a company does a buyout of another company in order to turn it around and make it profitable, they set those kind of targets. This is step one, this is step two, this is step three, this is how much we expect to save, this is how much we expect to increase, and this is the point at which we're going to turn this thing around. GMH is a turnaround story. So at what point are we going to actually turn it around? And how much are we going to need to further subsidize it just in the current environment in order to make that turnaround a reality? I support the Guam Memorial Hospital, and I want it to succeed. But there's a fine line between management and money. And just to say that we're sure on these areas, and we have these obligations, and we need more money coming in, without giving this body a target on exactly how much we're talking about, how do we know how much to raise a taxes on anything? How do we know how much to, to charge in fees or whatever? If there's no target, then we're just dumping money, and we're not trying to achieve a goal. Now, Madam Speaker, that's just in the current environment. I asked a second question two months ago. What about when the new hospital opens? What's the worst-case and best-case scenario on how that's going to impact the revenues of the hospital? And in those scenarios, what's the hospital going to do in order to mitigate the best case or the worst case? Because a new hospital is going to open. So how much is that going to hurt our Guam Memorial Hospital? Because we're going to have to further find additional revenue sources in order to make up for that shortfall when that occurs in the future. I asked that two months ago. I didn't get a response. I followed up with an email, and the response was, that's a good question. I'll talk to the general manager about it. And when the general manager came in here in the hearing yesterday, he didn't know. He said, oh, it's about 30% for paying customers and about 30% for third-party payers. So that's probably the worst case. I mean, I mean, it was just really figures out of the air. Clearly, no real sit-down and analysis on what the impact is going to be when that competitor opens up. And, Madam Speaker, that's very irresponsible. When you're coming and asking for more of the people's money, but you're not telling the people exactly how much it's going to be, or at least what your target is, then why are we going to continue dumping money when we don't even know exactly what we're trying to hit? I'm very adverse, Madam Speaker, to the notion that money is the solution to all of our If we don't know what the money is trying to achieve, then it doesn't matter how much we spend. And if we're going to be raising a tax on anything without knowing exactly how much we're shooting for, then where are we getting the, the validation for that, that percentage rate? Should it be 4%? Should it be 8%? Should it be 30%? And that's not even debating the merits of the funding source. I'm strictly speaking to the merits of appropriating money. And it's so important, Madam Speaker, because of the many things that we talked about throughout the deliberations on other matters before this body in this session. We have obligations coming. We have obligations currently outstanding. Our law enforcement personnel are all owed back pay that's accruing. And not only does that back pay need to be paid in a lump sum in order to catch up, but then we're also going to need to make an appropriation to the retirement fund in order to catch that up as well. In 2015, we had $15 million due in additional debt service. In another bill that we just entertained not too long ago to expand the Ukuru High School, we're adding 1.2 million on top of that. The hospital itself has an $8 million balloon payment. So many obligations. We have, I think $10 million was the figure in outstanding payables to the hospital. So many needs, and yet, we're going to be passing this bill without any clear target on what exactly the hospital needs. on what exactly the hospital needs. So I wanted to bring that up, Madam Speaker, because I strongly insist that if we're going to be voting on anything, we need to understand entirely how much that amount, what's the light of the end of the tunnel? How much more are we going to need to put in in order for us to be able to say that's a good investment? And the retiring speaker spoke about other alternative sources, and it was because of all of this discussion in this session, Madam Speaker, that I worked very, very closely with the chair, who oversees appropriations. And I asked him, I said, "Mr. Speaker, could we move my bill to the floor as well, Bill 89, because that's going to address a major funding source question." There's money out there, Madam Speaker. We have $179 million in uncollected taxes over the last 10 years. $179 million. And so when we talk about all these other items of appropriating money, of generating revenue, the one thing that gives me comfort is knowing that if we can take that money and lockbox it, we're going to be able to pay off a lot of these things. So there's money out there, we need to collect it. From day one, I've been saying we need to collect. And certainly, the hospital should be a priority in the expenditure of those collections so that we can catch everything up and not have the existing situation that we have now. I have a cousin who just recently gave birth, and so I was able to relate very strongly to the story of the chairman. And as part of the pain management of the delivery, the question came up of an epidural. And from what she was told, based on what was communicated to us just last night, it wasn't available. I'm sure it was only available in an emergency if you needed a C-section. So the hospital has dire needs. But what we need to do is we need to balance money and management, and management needs to come down here and communicate clearly exactly how much they need in the current environment, based on their cost-cutting and revenue-generating efforts, where are they going to meet maximum efficiency, and how much more are they going to need in this appropriation? That's number one. And number two is, what's going to be the impact when the hospital opens? Because if we're going to be dumping more money into the hospital today just to meet the current environment, only to fall off the cliff a year or two later because this new hospital opens, then we've done a disservice to our people by spending money without even realizing how much was needed at the end of the tunnel. So, Madam Speaker, I rise in great hesitation of this bill, not even talking about the merits of the funding source, because I don't even know how much GMH needs. I know what's outstanding, but without having a true picture of the need, we cannot understand how much we truly need to generate in order to meet that need, because we don't know. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sniklas. At this time, I'm going to entertain Speaker Pangolinan, who had a motion of inquiry earlier. But if you want to entertain a motion to...
I think I, what I stated was, the author was speaking on behalf of the Attorney General, paraphrasing him and telling him, telling us what the Attorney General's position. And if he was going to do that, we have the Attorney General out there. And I had asked that the body allow the Attorney General to come in here to address the issue.
Right, so I'm asking right now, are you going to turn that into a motion? Ask him, because a point of inquiry is not debatable.
Okay, I wasn't aware that it was a point of...
A point of order, Madam Speaker.
Set your point of order, Senator Respechial.
Madam Speaker, if I hear the good speaker correctly, then I would move that, notwithstanding the House rules that we suspend discussion on Bill 20, that we resolve in the committee of the whole for purposes of discussing the substitute version of Bill 20, that we invite the Attorney General in. And I am suggesting also that we invite Revenue and Taxation in, as well as Attorney Randy Conliff. And so we can have one debate that's going to represent both sides of the issue. And so I make that motion at this time.
On that motion, or the Senator Pangolinan?
Madam Speaker, I certainly agree with the Attorney General, and certainly Rev and Tax, these are government officials. But a private attorney representing a private client, is that, is this bill then just for Mr. Conliff's client? Because if it is, then that brings this whole thing into a completely different light. And who is the client of Mr. Conliff? So I just don't think that Mr. Conliff, in that context, you know, would be, it would be appropriate to allow him in here to plead a case for his client. This bill is a bill for a public policy to apply to everybody and not one single entity, unless the author is going to say this bill is for one single person and one single client and not as a public policy.
Speaker Pangolinan, I will ask, I will ask the speaker, I mean, the good senator, majority leader, the explanation for entertaining Attorney Conliff.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. I suggested Attorney Randy Conliff, because it's very obvious that he was the attorney that was going to court to represent this interest to which these licenses were revoked. And so he presented himself at the public hearing yesterday in favor of the bill. And if we're going to invite some legal aspect of this to give us that aspect, that legal guidance from that perspective, I certainly want to make sure that we have the other perspective that says that there is some issue with respect to the government's position, with how the government mistreated his client with respect to the issuing of these licenses. So if we want to have a discussion and we want to be transparent, let's be transparent. Let's not just say...
We had Mr. Conliff out there yesterday, telling us his opinion already.
And so, Madam Speaker, we had...
Madam Speaker, then this bill is a bill for attainment, which would be illegal, because you can't have a bill for attainment.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, there's a call on the question, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor with the motion as presented by Senator Respechial, unless there's an objection, is there any objection? Is there an objection? If there's an objection...
Well, Madam Speaker, if the objection is because we had Mr. Conliff at the hearing yesterday, then I withdraw my motion to resolve in the committee of the whole, because also at yesterday's hearing, the public was properly noticed, everyone had an opportunity to come before the legislature at that public hearing venue. So we just can't have it our way, and it's one way or no way. And so I withdraw my motion and I request that we proceed.
That's not the issue, Madam Speaker. The issue here is that if this is a bill for one specific client, then I think that needs to be disclosed.
Mr. Speaker Pangolinan, if I may, there was a motion on the floor, motion is withdrawn. You do have the opportunity to speak on Bill 20.
Then I'm moving, Madam Speaker, I'm moving then that we suspend discussion on Bill 20, resolve in the committee of the whole, call the attorney, request the presence of the Attorney General and Rev and Tax to come before this body to give us their reading on the bill.
On that motion...
I object.
There's an objection on the floor. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor to suspend discussion on Bill 20 and bring the parties in, signify by raising your hand, please. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and take a...
Madam Speaker, what was the vote? I only counted...
Eight. There was eight.
There was eight?
There was eight.
Including the chair's vote?
We'll go ahead and take a couple of minutes to...
Before we recess, then, can I move that we also invite Attorney Randy Conliff to be a participant in this committee of the whole process? Because we just really can't get one side of this issue without, we've had members of the Chamber of Commerce in here before, we had representatives representing some other interests in this committee of the whole, and now all of a sudden, those who are not supportive of this measure just want to stack it up with people who will not support this measure? So I'm asking that we be transparent, we level the playing field. And so I move that we extend the courtesy invitation to Randy Conliff, who was at that hearing yesterday, and I want to hear what he has to say.
There's a motion on the floor to invite Attorney Randy Conliff to be a part of the committee of the whole. Are there any objections? If there are no objections, motion carries. It's 12 o'clock, ladies and gentlemen, and I do have a bunch of students coming in from the Philippines, participating in a sports tourism event. We're going to go ahead and call for recess so that we can get everything set up. We're going to take a minute recess. We will take a legislative recess till 2 o'clock this afternoon.